Well, hey, thanks so much for being with us this evening. In a moment, our board president is going to open up an official board meeting because we do this actually in session, in actual board meeting. But we were just commenting in the back that we've had sort of a, you know, I guess you could say a challenge or a problem around here in that we've just had so many great things going on. We'll probably spend, you know, a good portion of tonight's board meeting acknowledging Illinois State Scholars, Porter Players, McBride and other students. And then shortly after that, May 19th, we have SEAL by Literacy. We have Vocal Point that just took New York by storm. We have, yeah, that was incredible, you know. We've got Skills USA and more. It just seems like Porters are doing amazing things everywhere from your term. My name is Matt McBride, Superintendent Period of LaPort Township High School. In a moment, if you could give it up for our Board President and Lopez Cadeva, if you don't mind. These board members, I think it's the toughest volunteer job in America and probably the most democratic job in America, local people volunteering in government to move something really important forward through their schools. The reason why we do this, and we're so glad that you're here, is because we just think it is important as a ritual for the elders, the adults of the society, to turn to our students who will someday take our place and acknowledge the good that they do. And when they're excellent, it's worth taking a moment to celebrate you as their family and their parents that had such an influence on them, to celebrate them for what they've done, and to celebrate what we've done as a high school district. So we are just so glad that you're here tonight. And sometimes these ceremonies, especially in April and May, you know, reading names, saying names, shaking hands, sometimes if you're a lot of them, you can say, you know, what is all this hoopla for? But I just always invite people to think of, what is it not for? It's not to just let great accomplishments go unseen. And we want to make these students seen and present. We want to tell them as a community that we think they've done good in this world. And you're a part of it, we're a part of it. The board represents the entire 65 square miles of this district and obviously these fabulous people, and especially their teachers and advisors and coaches who have propelled them here to our off-duty corps. So without further ado, whenever our board president opens up the meeting, we're going to get things going on. People will be scooting along, probably with the Illinois State Scholars. We won't take a big group picture up here because there are just too many of them. So we'll pass them along, but you'll probably see we'll get the Porter Players. Mrs. Lopez Cadeva.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. McBride, and thank you. Welcome up here, and we're just really happy that you're going to be here celebrating all our students' accomplishments. All right, I call this meeting to order at 7:04. Role call.
Shaw, here. Teague.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Johnson. Garretson, here.
Here.
Alola.
They're here, but they're there.
Here. All right, at this time, if you all stand up for the Pledge of Legions. You're in the court. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. All right, at this point, I'm going to ask Ms. Candace Garretson for the Portland Position Secretary. All right, at this point, I will start with the resolutions and recommendations.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of LaPort Township High School Porter Players. Student Directors Brody Garros, Nicholas Quinn, Student Vocal Director Tara Mastoragos, Ensemble Megan Dillon, Candace Pham, Benjamin Forbes, Tara Mastoragos, Jack Sel, Olivia Sweeney, Student Choreographer Katrina Rygarz, Student Sound Technician Duncan Kenny Benson. Whereas LaPort Township High School Porter Players competed at the IHSA Drama Competition State Finals on March 29th, 2025 at Richards High School in Oaklawn, Illinois, and was named third place in the state for Musical Theater Review. And whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and Q and D by achieving this respected status, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of LaPort Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 28th day of April 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Jaclyn Johnson, Eastern Principal for our Illinois State Scholars.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read the resolution for recognizing the accomplishments of the Illinois State Scholars from the class of 2025. Whereas the following students have excelled in the state of Illinois academic competition and have been named Illinois State Scholars by the Illinois Student Assistance Commission and thereby have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of LaPort Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from the class of 2025 are hereby recognized for their outstanding academic achievement in the Illinois State Scholars Competition. Students, please come forward. Alexis Albright, William Reyes, James Byers, Paul Semino, Grayden Zaco, Grace DeShaw, Michael Derkis, Anna Egan, Mia Fontanada, Kat Brishkorn, Giulio Giovenetti, Isabella Franconi, Aubrey Gronendahl, Carolina Cadenas, Lauren Hammer, Abigail Hogan, Abigail House, Jenna Gemrose, Gianna Camper, Brooke Kemp, Caitlin Kleingmack, Cheyenne Klemowitz, Calvin Cozor, Owen Gutierrez, Elan Lappin, Jackson Maloney, Tara Mastorkas, Evelyn Morath, Kayden Namenson, James Novak, Logan Nusco, Allison Rehnen, Stephen Ruder, Christopher Ripley, Eric Slavinski, Mary Sola, Kayden Teigs, Anthony Toa, Kristen Wester, Avery Kalella. That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education by LaPort Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, this 28th day of April 2025. Congratulations.
Do I have a motion to sup the resolutions as presented? All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Canton and seconded by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Students, parents, congratulations on the accomplishments of your students. And that being said, we are going to take a five-minute little recess so we can take more pictures and get to congratulate all parents.
Loane, can you announce yourself?
Loane Johnson, board member. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before board salutes, of course, first of all, I'll do the first board salute. The board would like to salute Dr. Robert McBride for his outstanding leadership and being a great superintendent. We're very honored to have you as our superintendent. And we, as a board, we wanted to give you, present you with our resolution.
Dear.
So, all right. Whereas the LaPort Township High School Board of Education recognizes Dr. Robert McBride as an outstanding superintendent of our district, and whereas Dr. Robert McBride's exceptional leadership, prioritized by humility and his steadfast commitment to servant leadership, has brought honor and distinction to the school and community by maintaining a vision of academic excellence, empowering students and staff, adapting with flexibility in dynamic environments, remaining poised under the scrutiny of the public eye, and upholding the highest standards of morals and ethics. And whereas, though, through his humble service, dedication, and integrity, Dr. McBride stands as a role model for educators, students, parents, and the entire community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of LaPort Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 28th day of April 2025. Do I have a motion to sup this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Dr. McBride.
Thank you. That was an unexpected surprise. So appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No, no, no.
Last formal meeting of this board, so.
Yes, well, and in lieu of that, we also have something to show you.
Hello, Dr. McBride. On behalf of the Board of Education, we are honored to express our heartfelt gratitude for your dedication and leadership as we prepare to welcome the new board. This is the moment to recognize you and thank you for your unwavering commitment to LaPort Township High School.
You embody strength, resilience, and determination. Your compassionate, visionary, and inclusive leadership has left a lasting impact on all of us.
LTHS has always been a pillar of this community, but your dedication to community engagement, media presence, and partnerships, including JJC, Lewis University, and our municipalities and our municipalities have elevated our school to new heights.
Your leadership has helped highlight the incredible achievements of our students and academics. Duocratic programs, AP course enrollments, fine arts, and curricular activities.
The initiatives you've implemented have transformed LTHS into an outstanding learning environment for both students and staff. You have shaped our school's identity, making LTHS one of the best high schools in Illinois. And for that, we sincerely thank you.
Your unwavering support of the students, staff, and the board, especially in extremely challenging times, has made us all stronger and more resilient. Beyond being a great leader, you are and continue to be a mentor, a guide, and a friend to many. I personally thank you for all you have done and continue to do. It's been a pleasure to work with you and getting to know you. Thank you so very much.
Witnessing firsthand the engagement you have with students, staff, parents, and so many community members, not only knowing their names, but their lives, only underscores how fortunate we all are to have you. The deep passion you've exhibited to the board and all things Lockport sets an outstanding example for all of us to follow. Few see the level of commitment you have to LTHS, but please know, we all do. Thank you, Dr. McBride.
Oh, come on now. Thank you. Thank you. It's, 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 it's a team effort, my friends. It's a team effort. So, you know, thanks to everybody in this room, right? It takes all of us to do all of this. So, that was a delightful surprise. You're gonna bring out the weepy part of me. But just thank you very much. And as I said, in the, in, in the East Campus Cafeteria, I'm really appreciative for all the board members, those who are rolling off the board, Mr. Tease, Mr. Patton, Mr. Travis will officially do that, changing the guard next week, and those rolling, you know, on the board, Ms. Stright, Ms. Hayes, Ms. Halloran. You know, it's the cornerstone of democracy. Individual citizens volunteering in their community for something as important as public schools, public schools. We just don't have anything in the, in the world, a dream, you know, as big as that, you know, from our friend Horace Mann. So, really, you know, obviously couldn't do without you guys. It was an unexpected surprise. So, as my grandmother, you know, always told me, Bobby, you just smile and say thank you. And that's what I'll do. So, thank you very much. It was very nice. I think Mr. Slager and Mrs. Castillo were involved in it too. So, thank you.
At this point, I think Ms. Castillo wants a group picture.
Of course she does. Okay.
You said group picture?
You'll be in the middle.
No, you don't need to go in the side because when you're in the middle.
Where is the middle?
I'll be on the side.
Let's, let's not do the Romanoff. Okay. Let's get some contour.
Yeah, do you want to take this photo?
Yeah.
Are you board members or are you not board members?
Do you like do the ends?
Yeah, well, you look at it, you know, your sense of style. Yeah, thank you guys. Thanks so much. It was awesome.
Okay. Now we will have our board salutes. So, anyone can jump in.
I'd like to recognize our C3 crew over at the CCC for putting together the artisan market that they are working on with our students. More specifically, Rose Bada and Sue Herring. I'm excited to come see it this Friday. So, I just know that they're doing wonderful things, and I've heard wonderful things from parents who have students.
I don't want to pick out just one group, but I just want to salute all the, the students that achieve what they achieved this week, last week. And I know, coming from Lockport, it's something that, that happens. It's magic. You know, Lockport is a magical place, and I, I know for a fact that whenever you want to achieve something, you can achieve. So, I salute all the students.
Thank you.
I have a few salutes. My, my son's graduating as a senior this year. I had a lot of really, really great interactions with the school recently, specifically the water polo team. He, he was on that team for four years. Coach Brady, Coach Salick are their coaches this year. Phenomenal job, growing him into somebody that could barely stay afloat to be in a arena when it comes to scoring goals. His para, he had a para, the same para, for four years in a row, Mike Taylor. I mentioned this a few months ago, but the paras just go out of their way for the kids they support. And Mike specifically, I'd go to Special Olympics Games and some other, he, he helps out the high school in many different ways. So, he's a great asset for the district. And the special education department does not get enough salutes for what they do and coordinate. Heather Black, the department chair, my son's case manager, Mr. Schroeder, and particularly Wendy Scoopin. Did I pronounce that right? Wendy Scoop. The coordination they have to do on all the different IEPs is, is pretty phenomenal. And lastly, I wanted to, or I got two more, I'm sorry. Janice Overby with Transportation. People might not realize, so my son was on special transportation through Hopewell Transport. I got an individualized calendar every single month for four straight years, telling me exactly who was picking up and dropping off my son on a daily basis. And she did that for my son, and I felt special. She probably does that for dozens and dozens, if not hundreds of families. So, it's pretty phenomenal what they undertake there. And lastly, one of the languages we can take at Lockport is sign language. And I think my son had a lot of really positive teachers through his four years. But Ms. Schmuck stuck, stands out to me. I know we honored her, I think, three or four months ago. So, she takes a special effort with kids like my son. After his two years of sign language, she has them all in their classrooms, on breaks, has a club for sign language kids, just has a special heart for, for kids that, that appreciate sign language and kids like my son. So, a lot of positive engagement, and I'm certainly gonna miss a lot of that as he graduates here in a month. So, thank you.
I have two board salutes. So, first off, Avery and I were both attendants of prom on Saturday night, and I just wanted to thank all the administrators that gave up their Saturday night to be there. The work that Lockport did with the Museum of Signs and Industry to create the partnership. It truly was just such a lovely night. I felt it could not have been more planned, more smooth, and just so easily enjoyable and so fulfilling. So, thank you so much to everyone who put so much work into that. And then my second one was in May, March, we're not in May yet. I was able to go to the Capitol for AP Day in partnership with College Board, and that was with Mrs. Featherling and Mrs. Pratt. And that was just such a lovely day to be able to see how legislator and senators and House Representatives work, and how their work directly impacts us and schools. And it was really fruitful to be able to be lobbying for something that is hopefully gonna help generations of Lockport students. So, that was so lovely, and I'm so grateful to Mrs. Featherling and Mrs. Pratt for their just friendship and their guidance on that day.
All right. Well, my board salute is for the Top 10% Dinner, in which all of our four board members, we're four student board members. They were being honored that day too. So, congratulations and congratulations, and to the parents. It was a great evening that we had there. And I believe Ms. Tease, Mr. Teese was also in attendance, and I believe Ms. Candace Garretson also, because she, her son was being honored too. It's great, great time.
I want to salute Vocal Point and Skills USA students who put their whole heart into really everything they do. And it really shows through the success that they see through their clubs. And I wanted to thank each person who supports and allows these clubs to function. And really, these are the clubs that help students grow. And then, just to mention real quick, that we got another state officer elected from Lockport, Juliana Reyes. So, thank you to her for continuing, continuing the legacy of a Lockport State Officer at Skills USA.
And I would say, what can't we celebrate? If anyone doesn't believe that we're a high-performing school, I would say that there are AP scholars, Illinois State Scholars, tech students, singers, athletes, performers, who are highly evident, two of which are sitting to my right, of how successful we are. And I salute all of our students and staff for leading with honor.
Mine go to the school staff and the administration. I was able to participate in the bell schedule staff meeting and then the state, the safety meeting. And just the amount of care and thoughtfulness and work that goes into determining some big things that happen to the school and will affect it in ways that I, I learn every day, that that's, it's very complex and everything you think is like moving a chessboard. So, I really enjoyed being able and was honored to be able to interact with staff, administration about the bell schedule. And then relative to the safety meeting, the room was full. With surrounding municipalities, administration, and it was, it was positive to see all that interaction and across multiple levels, different departments, different cities, and from fire department and police, and to know that everyone's got a stake in making sure that our kids are safe.
Hey, thank you. All right. Moving on to student board member reports.
Okay. So, since our last board meeting, we've had two superintendent advisory council meetings. So, we have lots of information to update the board on. I'm going to speak on our latest April meeting, and Avery's gonna start off with our March meeting.
All right. So, we did a deep dive into cell phones. Just learning more about that, there's six bills in legislation. I'm actually, I think, one of them passed. Or something happened. Yeah. And then, so, really, we looked at, like, what do consequences look like? How are we going to get cell phones to be, like, how is it gonna be strict that students will follow? And we really did a deep dive into how consistency plays a huge aspect in doing that. And then, speaking with parents would be a very important aspect of that, getting parents to agree that, yes, students cannot be on their phones during school. I talked to several teachers. We talked to Ms. Bonpelio. And I recently spoke with Ms. Murphy about how there is no system set in place for when a teacher sends out, like, a referral, they don't get any information back on that. So, it causes a lot of, like, confusion with the teachers. So, I just think getting this in place again, because it used to be perfectly fine when students, when it was all paper, you'd get the paper back. But now, since it's all online, they don't get any response back. So, I think that's something that we need to add so that the teachers feel supported when given consequences. Yeah. And it's pretty much deep dive into cell phones and how that'll work in the future.
All right. And then, just three days ago, on Wednesday, April 23rd, we did a really deep dive into the bell schedule, just as Mrs. Garretson said, with the staff meeting about the bell schedule. That's really something that the advisory council is really prioritizing right now. As it's something that in the upcoming years will definitely have to be put into place. So, I have a few just statistics, so the board can kind of get a sort of pulse on how the advisory council group is feeling about the bell schedule as sort of a representative for the whole student body. And so, first off, it was unanimous that everyone in the council agreed that it was better to take two to three minutes off of each class period in order to add an extra period at the end of the day. Everyone agreed that that was best to do. And then, everyone also agreed that class periods should not go below 45 minutes. We said that anything less than 45 minutes, it was impeding instruction, that by the time you got into the classroom, got settled, assignments out, there was really no time for enrichment at the end of a class period, at the end of a lesson. So, that was something that was also unanimous. And majority said to keep late start at the same time. We kind of looked at, into maybe moving late start up an hour on Wednesdays to create some more room in the schedule. But everyone said that they liked late start at that time. And they also said, just in general, in the concept of a late start, most said that, yes, it was necessary for them for their bio rhythm, to get rest midway through the week, that that was something that, when the board is deciding on a schedule, it needed to be in there, a late start, just for the overall best health of the students. Most said that compass four days a week was necessary. Some said that it would be okay to go down to two or three days a week, but the majority said keeping compass four days a week with that late start excluding compass was something that was important to their education and allowed them to just further enrich the lessons that they learn in the classroom outside of that single class period that they have. And then, most said as well for compass, that it should be no less than 30 minutes. There were some that said that no less than 35 minutes was best, but the majority was that in order for compass to be a productive period of time, that it should be no less for 30 minutes. And that was all regarding the bell schedule. Do you guys have any questions for us? Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. AFT report, Ms. Katie Kishline.
Good evening. I kind of feel like you got a hold of my speech before I could give it tonight. But congrats to all the students that were recognized tonight. We would all say, our entire staff would say that the students are our best part of our day. Congratulations on your first-place finish this weekend. But I would like to, first of all, thank you for recognizing all the support staff and all the hard work that they do on a daily basis. That warms my heart. A big shout out to Mr. Matt Mullins, who was awarded the Advisor of the Year for Skills USA. And I didn't know that we were carrying on, that someone else was going to be taking your spot. But someone who runs a work program, I have to tell you that not one interview in my life did I talk about a class, an assignment. I talked about the experiences I had, the programs I ran, the events I took place in. That's what, you know, those are the real-life things that come to life in interviews and get you where you need to go. So, you know, without our advisors, without our supervisors, our coaches, none of it would be possible. So, what else did I have? Oh, on the union standpoint, there are some House bills that are coming forward that could be affecting our para evaluation. So, we're, they kind of have us on hold with that stuff. The student growth, that was a big topic at our meeting this month. Along with that, the Tier Two fight is still going strong, hopefully lowering the age for our Tier Two teachers for retirement. So, that was a big item on our agenda this month. A little plug this weekend for our spring musical. If you have nothing going on, I hope you all will be attending that to see the talent on stage. And last but not least, we are looking forward to honoring our retirees at our union event on Wednesday, May 21st, from 5:00 to 8:30 at Zachary's Barn. So, if you can make it, we'd love to have you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. The IASB report. Not sure if Ms. Johnson has anything.
Okay. I was saying, I like to send, give a sending invite to people already. I think it's a rule, is it? That's always been the action.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right. Foundation report. It's there, and some dates that are there. Thank you, Ms. Adolf. Okay. All right. Legislative report.
Legislative report, my word. So, what I did is I, I loaded up the bills of interest that, that are pending, and it's moving very, very quickly down in Springfield, so quickly that, you know, Avery might be out in front of me, one of six of those bills to deal with cell phones in schools might, might, might have sailed. It might have only left committee. They usually vote at the very, very last minute on all of these. But I tried to pull out and then always put the link into the actual bill itself to see the bills that, that might be impacting us the most. And what I could do is I could tell And what I could do is I could tell you what I know, you know, about each one of these. There is a number. There is a bill, one of the bills up there, to create a situation where in seventh and eighth grade, you can get high school credit. Some districts already have those agreements, but this would be the state getting behind that. There's another bill in here called Right to Play. Right to Play is basically that you can be on a club sport and a high school sport at the same time. There is the homeschool bill here, that public schools would have some regulatory authority over, over homeschooling. Certainly, I could tell you the ones that we as superintendents are promoting or opposing, you know, fairly actively. But just, you know, any questions on these? There are so many of them in the education space right now that we're sort of following all of them. One, Mrs. Kishline did mention about para, which is the Performance Education Reform Act, it's our evaluation act. That's looking at, are we going to continue or not using student growth measures in evaluations? And then tier two, that's in our retirement system. There's also a bill pending for that as well. There's also a bill pending that is looking at a process we don't use very much called Notice to Remedy, a discipline process that would give certain rights to staff members or expand those rights if staff members in what's called a Notice to Remedy situation. Any, any questions I could answer for you? We'd spend an awful long time if I shared with you my thoughts on all of these. I will share with you my overall thought. I'm very concerned in this session that there's some real overreach going on by the legislator. Seems like the Senate is very organized, the House seems very disorganized in its legislative approach and its committees. And there doesn't seem to me to be a lot of thought in some of the bills about what, what are some of the collateral consequences? Right to Play, you can be on your club and you can be on your high school sport at the same time. What does that say to athletes? What kind of time demands? Injuries? What does it say about the role of sport versus the role of, of school? For example, homeschool bill, people have elected homeschool primarily because they'd like to do that privately. Should government really be walking into people's homes and assessing their curriculum and their activities? There just seems, that seems to be my take on this legislature. So uncharacteristically, I don't like to call a lot of our representatives and state senators and say, "Vote no." Representative Avalar, we went down a list of bills and I, my recommendation was no, no, no. And usually, we're very supportive of good legislation to support, you know, education. But right now, it just seems there's a lot of overreach. Cell phones, I would say, we're, we're, all of us are probably saying yes. You know, we probably need to create a more cellphone free space for all of us. Any questions?
I have two. On the, the House Bill 3039, the seventh and eighth grade courses? I don't, what's the purpose of that? I mean, I, I mean, our students are already, seem to be kind of stressed out about the whole process to begin with, and is there?
That's a really good question, Mrs. Garretson. That's coming from a couple of different places. One is it's coming from forces that would like to accelerate student learning, right? Would like to, let's say in mathematics, get a student freshman year into math two, because there is an algebra requirement on the high school level, so you can accept algebra in middle school or junior high. Get into math two, that would accelerate, you could, you know, go deeper into calculus and maybe what University of Illinois offers high schools, which is differential calculus, right? That, that is also coming from some of the state mandates that we're looking at with the world language mandate, the science mandate. People are looking at schools and saying, listen, if I can in seventh and eighth grade knock out some high school credits, then these mandates to take two years of world language, three years of science, won't block my student in so much. So it's, it's coming from those two bookends.
Okay, thanks. And then, the homeschool bill, do you think that that's, is that moving anywhere?
I don't think it will get out of committee. It's gone back for revision, revision, revision. I would be very surprised. Ms. Fontanetta would be a good person to speak to because she could barely get into the state building, because the day that you went for your AP showcase, the building was occupied by Illinois homeschoolers opposing the bill. And this is a situation where administrators throughout the state oppose it, as do people who homeschool. It's just a governmental overreach. So I, I'm having a hard time imagining that it would, it would, it would emerge out of a House committee and make it to the, to the floor of both houses, much less, you know, the governor signing it. But we'll, we'll see.
Thanks.
Is this close enough?
Well, it's very close. Outstanding.
The, the one about teacher shortages and settling, and handling that with paid student teaching, what, what, are they, is a student teacher a high school student then? Is that what they're suggesting?
No, what they're suggesting is, so to incentivize, there are, you know, at, at all of our teacher prep sites in, in Illinois, numbers are dropping of people going into teacher prep. And two things, they're just dropping, people are not going into the teaching profession because of perceptions of pay and degree of difficulty. The second thing is where most of our teachers are going is out of state. You know, Mizzou, Wisconsin, Iowa, I'd probably say Mizzou and Iowa the most, most popular. So the state is thinking of ways that you can incentivize going into teaching. One is that when you're a college senior, so for example, at North Central, I work with students who are going into student teaching, that when you go to a high school to student teach at any given time, we have any number of student teachers, that they would be paid. It would be a paid internship, basically. Right now, it's not a paid internship. You teach for anywhere between 10 and 12 weeks, oftentimes full five classes, and you're also paying tuition at the same time. And so that bill is looking to, it's, what it's looking at is that there are things like in social work, there are paid social work internships, but not on the classroom side of things. So that's what that bill's looking at.
So is it broadly accepted as something that?
It'll be interesting, because it's, you know, ultimately, it's not the state legislator that's paying student teachers, you know, it would be districts. So it's getting some opposition as an unfunded mandate, right? Now, I would support it if, you know, think about it for a second, if we were a hospital system across the country and our four-year medical school graduates didn't have residencies to go to, we would have a very difficult time, you know, if we didn't have a system of residencies, right? And nobody coming out of medical school is gonna do a residency as a unpaid internship, right? So that's what they're trying to get at, but school districts would be the ones, you know, it's not the state creating a fund to pay student teachers, it's an expectation that we would pay student teachers. Much like when the minimum wage increased, we had to start paying our student workers that minimum wage.
Dr. Frank Brey, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do already have an agreement with the surrounding middle schools to honor world language credit, right?
We, we do have some situations where your world language credit can place you, right? Can place you into a class, right? What the state is saying is that you have to have two years of high school world language to pass out of that requirement.
Okay, that makes sense.
This would make it possible to count seventh or eighth grade world language as high school world language.
Okay, and not necessarily just the acceleration.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Johnson.
Yeah, did you know why a lot of people are going to Mizzou?
Well, I think both Mizzou and University of Iowa are extremely competitive. Yeah, our, our, they're literally going to school and enrolling in education programs there. And so just from a tuition proposition, those are very, very competitive universities, flagship universities. They also have something else that you can establish residency within a year and get in-state tuition. So that's a little bit of an edge on Illinois.
Well, going back to that, going back to that seventh and eighth grade credit, the high school is rolling out a math pilot program this year.
We are for math two.
That could allow calc two as early as junior year, which sounds pretty similar to what they're trying to achieve.
Right.
At least on that track.
That's on the acceleration end of things, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, my button wasn't pushed. The only difference being that the, we don't currently offer credit as they're coming in, correct? So they're placing ahead, but they're not receiving that high school credit on their transcripts until they pass the high school course.
Right, they'll, they will still have to do three years of mathematics.
But this would essentially say, you know, we're trying to get them through quicker and earlier and maybe graduate earlier.
Right.
Because they're receiving the high school credit. And that also puts a burden on our feeder schools to have teachers in place that have the certification to teach those courses.
Right, the other thing this bill requires is those seventh and eighth grade teachers have to have high school certification. You know, that's what the junior colleges say to us as well, right? You could do dual credit, but you have to have the qualifications that you see at JJC. Stay tuned, you know? It's, there's a lot going on.
Just keep us updated. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Brey. Okay, there were no public comments for the update for the April 3rd special meeting. All right, moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. We have a few here, we'll start with Ms. Mary Kelner.
Good evening. Hey, Ms. Kelner, is there, I can't see it from here, is there a green, is your mic on? A little green ring at the bottom, or is it? Oh, do you mind just pressing the button right in front of you? Yeah, there you go.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
As you know, my name is Mary Kelner. My daughter has been on the girls' wrestling team for the past three years under head coach Nathaniel Roth. Recently, the team and parents were advised that the district will not be renewing his coaching contract for the next year. I'm here this evening to express our profound disappointment with this decision and how it was handled, as well as to be an advocate for Coach Roth, for it would be a terrible disservice not to be. The team and several parents are devastated over this decision and feel it is completely wrong and truly unjustified. Upon contacting the district to inquire on why this was taking place, I was advised that this was a building-level decision to go in a different direction for the girls' wrestling program. However, senior administration is aware of the decision. How does such a team-altering decision take place by those who are not involved with the team, or the sport, or even speak to the girls or the parents? Upon some further research, the team and parents have become aware that this decision was driven in part by the threat of potential legal action against the district by a former wrestler, for they felt that they were not treated the way they thought they should. This claim of unfairness is completely unfounded. Had any of those involved in this decision took the time to speak to any one of the girls on the team, they would emphatically state that Coach Roth was always fair and just with not only the former wrestler, but with all of them, and that they are incredibly distraught by this most terrible decision. In addition, several parents, such as myself, witnessed firsthand the interactions Coach Roth had, not only with the wrestler and their parent, but with all the girls, and could list several instances where he acted diplomatically and fair despite the difficult situations before him. It's been over since, it's been over a year since the former wrestler and the parent were affiliated with the team, yet the decision was made to remove him as head coach now in an attempt to help control the narrative and keep any bad publicity from occurring. As a parent that is quite involved in the team the past three years, I can firsthand attest to the passion, dedication, and utmost fairness that Coach Roth leads the team with. He's been there since the teens inception and has built them to what they are today. Coach Roth treats every girl equally and fairly as should be. Even when it's a tough situation, he always stays the right course of action. My daughter has personally stated that she's completely crushed with the reality that Coach Roth may not be there for her senior year. He's been with her since the beginning, when she knew nothing of the sport, and he has helped develop, develop her into the athlete that she is today. A great coach goes beyond teaching skills. They foster trust, understanding, and growth, empowering individuals to reach their full potential through clear communication, positive reinforcement, and genuine commitment to their development. Coach Roth does all these things and then some. I am personally beyond upset that this has happened, and implore the district to reconsider this course of action. He puts his whole heart and, whole heart and dedication into his team and these girls, often with his own personal time to assist them further. Anyone who attends a tournament, a meet, or a practice will witness this. Watching his excitement and celebration when a girl wins, especially really big wins, and seeing him get emotional while comforting them when they lose and the girls are in tears over their defeat proves over and over just how emotionally invested he is in each one to mentor and help them to be the best athlete they can be. I truly hope that senior administration realizes the negative impact that this unjustified decision has made on the girls and the team. They have not only been forced to lose an amazing coach who truly takes pride in his coaching, but also Jane Foytech, who is a completely volunteered person who volunteers all of her time as our video specialist and all-around team mom. She has been the backbone of this team and beloved not only to the girls, but the parents alike. The girls often talk on how they feel that the district doesn't provide them the same level of investment that is made in other sports. And now they see that the district has taken away their head coach to them without just cause, and this sadly reinforces this feeling with them. It is truly heartbreaking, the overall sadness the girls feel. Just yesterday at the team banquet, we were, many were in tears knowing that this may be the last one they have with Coach Roth.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Several parents have already contacted the district, expressing their feelings on the issue, and more have asked Coach to right the wrongs that are incurred. Despite all the challenges, the girls continue to march forward, because they are tough, they are dedicated, and they are passionate, and that is because of Nathaniel Roth. I truly encourage you to review and reverse the decision and bring back our head coach, because in the end, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
All right, next we have a Mr. Jason Kelner.
Good evening. I'll be a little more succinct than the last speaker. I too want to speak on the non-renewal of Coach Nathaniel Roth for the girls' wrestling team. Regarding the status of Mr. Roth as wrestling coach, the administration was given a test, and they failed the test. To say this decision is based on unsubstantiated accusations would be false. These accusations are not unsubstantiated, rather, they have been repudiated by anybody present who cared to be near this situation and all the characters involved. This is an indictment on admin members who didn't do their homework, were not present, or were more concerned with optics than reality. It is not really shocking that this is the attitude of some involved in this decision. Sadly, my wife has done more work to get the wrestlers the assistance they need than the AD has. But I digress. Perhaps the people involved in this decision need to wake up and take stock of the climate they live in. Perhaps they need to see which way the wind is blowing. We earn a spot on a team through participation, not through threats of being victimized by exclusionary behavior. Sacrificing Mr. Roth for not kowtowing to such behavior illustrates the stark difference between yourselves and him. When faced with veiled threats, some not so veiled apparently, Roth did what was right. You earn your spot, you don't bully your way into it through threats of litigation. Mr. Roth was faced with a teaching moment, and he passed it. He modeled consistency, hard work, team concept, earning your spot, and fair play. He did not allow external forces to influence his decisions. When faced with the same teaching moments, the district failed, choosing instead to cower in the face of false narratives, threats of litigation, and behavior that quite frankly should be discouraged, not rewarded. These contrasting models were seen by every one of the students on the team. Thank you, Coach Roth, for modeling exemplary behavior. As for those who made this decision, you have been an example as well, quite the opposite of exemplary.
Okay, next we have Sophie Kelner.
Hi, my name is Sophie Kelner, and I've been a part of the girls' wrestling team here at Lockport for the past three. I would like to take a moment to commemorate our former head coach, Mr. Roth, as well as address his I would like to take a moment to commemorate our former head coach, Mr. Roth, as well as address his release for the upcoming season as head coach. With that being said, wrestling has become a huge part of my life that I could not live without now. The passion to get better and the confidence to get through tough times as an athlete is fostered by a good coach, something Coach Roth, Coach Roth was the epitome of. When I first started wrestling as a freshman, I had no clue about how anything worked in the sport. Mr. Roth took on the role of teaching many girls throughout the past four years the basics of wrestling through a great deal of patience, as well as instilling fearlessness and resilience into the athletes' minds to overcome various tough matches and losses. All those girls I just described include myself, as I did a lot of losing my first two years on the team. This past season, Coach Roth was here to celebrate my big wins and my tremendous progress I have made as a wrestler, and all my success so far would not have been possible without his dedication to the team. He took the time beyond just mat side coaching to go over film, spend extra time at practice, going over anything we needed, and pushing us to be the best wrestlers he knew we could be. I never pictured going into my senior year with a different coach. That changes a lot, knowing that the new coach was not there throughout my journey. We all created a special bond as a team that extends, extends past just the athletes, but with our coaches as well. It will be a difficult to experience a new coach to come in and take over after many of us have been coached by Mr. Roth for multiple years, especially when there was no outright issue displayed that would cause any of us to directly support his termination for the upcoming season. Coming from the perspective of an extremely dedicated and observant student, student athlete, Coach Roth has never treated anyone unjustly or unfairly, as he made sure every single athlete was given the same opportunities, and never once excluded anyone on any sort of basis, no matter who they were. He always kept a professional attitude toward anyone he spoke to in both practice and the competition setting. And additionally, his communication skills were excellent with the athletes as well as the parents, as he was always sure to share detailed information about every event and other information in regards to the team. He always demonstrated the utmost respect for every parent, athlete, coach, or other when having a conversation. Lockport's decision to not renew his contract as the girls wrestling head coach is a detrimental one that will affect wrestling overall and the team. It will completely change the environment of the team, the practices, and most importantly to me, leave nine seniors, including myself, who started their wrestling careers with him as our mentor, working with us from the ground up, as a majority of us had little to no experience at all with the sport. Suddenly having to finish our high school career with someone brand new in our corner. Coach Roth, as well as our assistant, assistant coach, Coach Fuentez, led us to a second place team victory at the IHSA Girls Wrestling State in twenty twenty four after only having the program at our school for three years. This in itself is a remarkable achievement. Now, our team faces the possibility of a new coach being hired who has no prior experience with coaching, let alone any knowledge of wrestling at all. This will negatively impact the entire team and experience, as having a head coach with little knowledge heavily transfers to the training of the girls and their opportunity for success. I'm currently in the recruitment process for college, and Coach Roth is the first name I put down for any contact for the college coaches or recommendations, since he knows my potential and work ethic as an athlete as well as a team leader, something a new coach would have, have no knowledge of. Wrestling is a sport like no other, which requires support like no other. Coach Roth never failed to provide that support for any athlete without his leadership skills, true heart for the sport, and devotion to see all of us girls succeed, the team will not be the same. Coach Roth will be sorely missed by myself and many of the girls on the team, and next season will truly not be the same without him. Thank you for your time.
All right, next we have Ms. Tammy Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come as my last public speaker as a citizen and say thank you to everyone who has ever served on the board or has run for a board seat. It is, as Dr. McBride said, it is definitely a volunteer position with a lot of work, and it is truly for the better of our community, because our school is such an asset to our community that we can't live without it. So if you ran, if you got, if you got on, congratulations. If you're moving on to something else, I hope it all works out well. If you applied and were appointed, we appreciate it because the community needs more volunteers. We need people willing to go the distance for the district because it's, it really is what's important in our community is our kids, because they are our future. We can't, can't move forward as a society if our kids are not well educated. So that's our number one goal, so. And to the public who's out there watching, hopefully, if you voted for me, I really appreciate it, and I look forward to doing everything I can in the best possible way that I can, and hopefully, uh, everything will be wonderful. And so we, I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, and congratulations.
Thank you to our public comments. Okay. All right, communication. Ms. Garrettson.
We have, we have one. It's a thank you note, and I'll go ahead and read it. Dr. McBride, Board of Education and Administration, during a time like this, we learn how much our friends and family really mean to us. Your expression of sympathy will always be remembered. Thank you for your support during my sister's passing and for the flowers. It was appreciated by all of us and King and family for the passing of Jan Hendrickson.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on, and then you have a freedom of information request. You have three of them. They are listed. Moving on to our approval items. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April third, twenty twenty five special board meeting?
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes from the April third special board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Travis.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson. Yes. Keith.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the April twenty twenty five board expenses?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Johnson. Yes.
Yes. All right, at this point, Stephanie Cory, the Treasurers Report.
Good evening. Treasurers Report, everything that's posted in the Treasurers Report is, is fairly standard this month. There's nothing unusual or really that I'd like to point out. Actually, what I'd like to talk about or cover really quickly, I don't know if you were going to talk about it or not, but
Yeah, have at it.
The bond sale happened today. So that's, that's kind of what I wanted to talk about the board. I couldn't, didn't have any data to put in here. Um, but I do believe that there is a memo. Ms. Maxwell, did you give that to them already, or do I need to hand that out? It's in their packets. The memo, the memo. So you should have a memo. Yep. Okay. That was, we, it happened today at ten AM, so no, no ability to put any information in there before then. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the rest of the Treasurers Report, but I thought this might be more important or more pertinent. Um, so bond sale did, was conducted by PMA for us this morning. Um, there were six bidders. The interest rate that we ended up getting on our bonds is four point five two percent, which is slightly higher than the presentation we received from PMA in February. But that is good, because it's been significantly higher since the, the tariff announcements. So it, it has since stabilized. So this is actually good. Um, if PMA didn't think we were able, that we were going to be able to get this type of rate, um, they would have kind of held off, and we would have looked for a different date to do it, but, um, it turned out, turned out all right. The other information that you have here is about the closing, right? So the bonds will close on May nineteenth, kind of like, uh, any other funding or loan, rightly. It happened now, but we're going to close a little bit later. So the closing will be when the money's exchanged and we pay all of the relevant parties. Um, the final power amount of the bonds was fourteen point nine five five, so fourteen million nine fifty five. There was a premium, and then, um, there's some capitalized interest in that premium. So what that means is we will receive some of the interest upfront that we're going to be using to pay that first interest payment, right? So that will sit in the bond and interest fund, but, um, so you will see in May, it'll actually be in the June, the May Treasurers Report, which the board will see in June. You'll see the, the, the posting of this information into the general ledger, right? You'll see the recording of the receipts. Are there any questions about the sale?
Just over, the overall experience with PMA and the rest of the parties, it sounded like it went pretty smoothly.
Yes, yes. Um, so this is definitely what PMA Securities does all the time, right? So they, they're pretty, um, they actually did a really good job of kind of keeping me up to date. I believe Dr. McBride passed some information on last week about where we were kind of trending to the board. So we, we had really good communication up to this point, and they also did a really good job of, along with Chapman and Cutler, you know, leading us through our, um, uh, credit rating, right? So that it re, um, they assisted in the presentation that allowed us to maintain double A one credit rating. So yeah, the process was very smooth.
Thank you for all the work you guys did.
Any questions on the Treasurers Report or the, the bond sale information? There will be a number of things that need to be signed. It'll be all clearly marked, who signs what. Board Treasurer will have to sign things, which is myself, um, Board President, Board Secretary. Um, and some things will have to be signed by the current, as of right now, Board President and Secretary, and some will have to be signed by the, um, President and Board Secretary, uh, and the date of closing. But they're going to mark all that, so I'll have those things as soon as I get them. Might be available for the May fifth reorganization meeting.
And, and as Mrs. Cory said, you know, this is like anything you do in the stock or bond market, sometimes it's a judgment call. You know, certainly in the past few weeks, unusual for treasury bonds and municipal bonds, very, very stable, solid. But that market was roiling as well as the, the stock market. So we saw this opening, um, and there's potential for that market to, to royal again, right? And so just taking advantage, meeting our goals, an interest rate that we feel is acceptable, you know, an amount of loan that was our target, and so, you know, we felt that today was a good day for the sale.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, great job. And a ton of work by Mrs. Cory, doing all the, you know, the, the credit call and presenting, you know, our financials, doing everything with Moody's, doing everything with PMA, Chapman and Cutler, making sure it's a legal sale, um, you know, in terms of everything and how it has to be phrased, worded, you know, what it's going to go towards, tons of work behind the scenes.
Thank you. All right, do I have then a motion to approve the March twenty twenty five Treasurers Report?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Shaw.
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on to our superintendent report.
All right, great. We have a kind of a heavy duty report for you today, so, tonight, but I think two very important things that I invite you to, to ask questions as we go along. Um, one, first and foremost, it's already been said, don't want to repeat it too much, but it was really a delight. I just want you to imagine the scene in New York City on Friday night at Town Hall. You know, nine ensembles from across the country, everywhere, Calabasas, California to Atlanta, Georgia. You're on Broadway, literally, you know, uh, the epicenter of musical talent in, in really in the world, you could make that argument, uh, right up against London. There are students performing. You know, Vocal Point finished fourth in its first foray onto that national stage, and Gabby Castello finished top vocalist, solo vocalist in a, in a very, very talented field. So it just, it spoke to what you said, Mr. Thies, that just, I'll tell you, when you're, you know, a wrestler like Avery, a dancer like Mia, you can stand on a stage under that kind of pressure, and Vocal Point went first. So there's a lot of room to let that pressure get to you. And it was one of those performances I've seen in my thirty seven years where they just, they nailed it. You know, they left everything on the stage, and I think that grace under pressure, that to me is what public schools are all about. You know, those are young women who I think, uh, when they come off the stage and you're reminded that they're just teenagers, you're shocked. And so it really was an amazing thing for Dr. Johnson and I to be at, but combine that with prom, combine that with staff members and students going to Skills USA, and I could go on and on and on, but it's going to elongate an already long superintendent report. And then I would just rejoin, as I said, as you were thanking me, I would like to thank, you know, all of you, this board. Next week, we'll have a very ceremonial board meeting, a changing of the guard, but just want to thank you for stepping up. Your service, every single one of you has been in a thin space where you had to put your time, your family, your energy, your own professional obligations, and millions of things I probably don't even know, on hold to do this work. And when it's difficult and when it's joyful. Um, so just really appreciate you as well. So, uh, let's have our AI folks come on down. I'll get their, um, presentation going. Uh, very proud of this group. Uh, we started a journey two years ago. Two years ago, I went to, uh, the Educational Research and Development Institute Summit, and there wasn't a single presentation on AI, except for the presentation we did when we were partnering with Scribble for U S Department of Education grant. Not a single presentation. This winter, when I went to the summit, it dominated ninety five percent of, of what we were talking about. And artificial intelligence, its uses in the school space, it's, it's here to stay. And we've really taken an approach that you're going to hear about tonight to, uh, join a consortium in the Chicagoland area, really founded for appropriate uses of, of artificial intelligence. And really this team, I'm going to let Mr. Dusterhoff introduce his team. So we're going to lead you through our approach, what we've been trying to do, how we're trying to get a handle on these very, very powerful, uh, tools.
Very good, thank you. Um, so I'd like to start by introducing, uh, my two colleagues. Megan Nelligan is our, is with us for the first year. Uh, Megan was in the classroom, uh, here in our, uh, Family Consumer Sciences Department. Um, and she joined us this year as an instructional technology specialist. And Kate Fahy, he's been with us thirteen years, um, which means I've been here longer. And she's served in that role the entire time and has been instrumental in our, um, certainly going one to one back in twenty fourteen with Chromebooks, and certainly leading the tech program, uh, which we're very proud of. They both run that on the, on the daily basis. Alongside all of that, they also work closely with the teachers in all things technology. And so as we started our journey on artificial intelligence, the first thing we did was engage, uh, teachers, and so I'll let Kate start us off with what that looked like.
Now, I'm your slide band, so you tell me to advance and I will.
Uncharted waters. Okay. Um, so November twenty twenty two, seems like a long time ago, but that's when ChatGPT just exploded onto the scene. Um, it just appeared one day, um, literally. And so, you know, everybody's talking about it, but it very quickly made its way into our buildings. So we just started having conversations in the hallways. We started hearing people talk about it. There were a lot of concerns, the immediate thing, English teachers and other teachers concerned with plagiarism, academic integrity. How does this all work? The, the question across the country was, do districts block this? Do we try to allow students to use it? What's the student data privacy laws around all of that? Um, so we very quickly realized we needed to get a handle on some of this, and so we decided, um, to start what we call our not a committee committee, because we find the word committee can sometimes have a connotation. So we called it, um, our AERGs, our AI Research Group. And while it might look like there's copyright infringement there, there is not. We're very close. Designed by Pat Dean, we'll give him a shout out, the former instructional technology specialist. So, um, the, the, uh, group is, uh, about eleven teachers, one teacher from each department. We've, um, maintained the group. When we started, we spent a lot of time just talking and, and talking sort of about the elephants in the room. We spent a lot of time on that because we felt that in order for people to feel comfortable moving beyond those things, we really had to address them. So we spent a lot of time talking about that, reading articles. We took things slow. It, it has evolved into a multi-year group, um, and we've definitely moved from that inquiry in the beginning, and now we're very much into application and how we're using the different tools that are available out there. Yeah, that's in the group has asked us to stay together. So that's been awesome to see a group of people who, you know, at a large campus, two buildings doesn't, they don't always get to meet each other. So that's been really nice. They formed a PLC and they are continuing to work together. And that's kind of how it started and where we are today. And then, yeah, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. And so um, with that particular group, uh, sorry, in this uh, sorry, fall of this, of twenty twenty-four, we were invited to join a group called Leap Innovations. They're an organization in the city um, of like-minded districts um, to come together and talk about nothing but AI. Um, and so it was, there's schools from across the suburbs and the city. And we're able to come together, share our successes, share our failures, um, what works, what doesn't work. And it's um, you know, these are districts that aren't afraid to, to try things and to fail and then come back and share those. As, and, and we can all learn together. So it's, and it helps, so what that group does is it really helps us develop our vision um, and plan and see where, you know, we think uh, the district should be headed for um, uh, with artificial intelligence. One of the things that attracted us to Leap after uh, going to that first meeting was their, their focus on humans, human centered. That the AI is what everybody calls it, but it had started with artificial human intelligence. And, and that human part is super important to keep that as a center point in everything we do. Because while everybody is uh, you know, you hear on the news or podcasts or whatever, people or companies looking at ways to reduce headcount by using AI and removing humans from it. We want to do the opposite and that is stay human focused, use the tools, but keep the human piece of it um, very much in the forefront. But we really enjoyed and believe that they have something to, to add and help us with. And so Megan's going to talk about how we've partnered with AI, um, with Leap to provide some professional development for the ERG group.
Yeah, so in January of this past year, we had um, two people, Jessica and Stephanie from Leap, come to Lockport to meet with our AI group. Um, and we just kind of did like a deep dive into the program Play Lab that we've been using. Teachers in the AI group have been creating apps through this Play Lab app, dare I say. And it's just been a really awesome experience for us, like on here, how we talk about just like having an agent creation. So these teachers have been able to just go outside of what they would typically be doing in the classroom to create something really awesome to use it in different ways. So we even had a student who is one of our tech workers also. We asked him to be part of that, so that way we could also see this from a student perspective. And the teachers on the AI group got such awesome insight from having a student perspective on here. He created an awesome app. And actually, other teachers have been utilizing that app in their own way. So something that they might not have recognized or thought about prior to him being on there with us. So we had two sessions with them. Everybody left with an app that they have created and some have been even creating more. And now, just a couple of weeks ago, we started a new group of AI ambassadors. Not just incorporating teachers, but we wanted to incorporate a bunch of staff members amongst the entire school. So we have nurses, we have people from the HR department, we have instructional coaches, administrators, co-teachers to see how they can utilize these tools and make something that they can now use in the classroom. So we don't want to just stop at the teachers because we want to see how we can use this all within the entire district and see what people are able to create. Then we also are looking to having a student advisory group in the fall and having Leap partner with us again to maybe have some sophomores or juniors work on creating something within this app that they can start to use over the next couple of years. So that's still kind of a work in progress, but that is our goal for right now.
There will be quite, time for questions at the end, but obviously jump in if you have any questions um, in the moment. So um, one of the things that uh, prompted, I think, the board to ask questions was we were fortunate to be asked to come out to San Diego and uh, Kate had the opportunity to present um, at the, at the conference. And really that, that presentation was about our experience with ERG, um, how we formed that, uh, the process we took. And, and then our partnership with Leap. But what were some of our uh, takeaways from that? And um, the, the show, as they called it, uh, the conference, was, was a very thoughtful, reflective, again, a, a vision building opportunity for us to hear from lots of people. From the whole county organizations and how they're implementing it and getting things done. Some, there was a lot of college um, universities there, ASU being the biggest one. And how they're using it and how we can be preparing students uh, to, for, for college. So uh, some conferences can be very tool-based, you know, here's this tool, here's this app. This one was sort of a, a bigger picture, thought-provoking conference versus a, you know, more of a hands-on um, one. And it was great. Um, some of the takeaways, some of the things to focus on is change management. That's what we do all the time in the technology department. Everything's constantly changing. But this one is happening faster and larger than um, what we've seen before. The rate of acceleration is um, incredible. And so we have to really be thinking about it even more than maybe we normally would. We have to bring everyone into the, to the picture, uh, teachers, staff, students. And in particularly, uh, thinking about community and parents. Just like when the internet came, we all had to come together and figure out how do students use it? Both in the classroom, outside the classroom and uh, you know, getting families comfortable with it. Same thing here, uh, as we continue to move forward, making sure everybody's at the table. Being a part of the conversation. Guidance, uh, constantly we're having conversations. I had one, yeah, maybe Friday with somebody in the hallway right in front of door four. They had gone somewhere, they had seen some things and they wanted to start using them and they had, but they had a million questions. We've worked really hard and our teachers have been very good about recognizing student data privacy and general security of, of information and our technology in general. And so they want to try these things, but they, they have a pretty good sense and immediate sense of, wait, I have to stop and think about this instead of just jumping in. And so whatever we can do to provide guidance, um, is going to be super important. And then finally, uh, the ta- takeaway was that there were three things that we can um, or should be focusing on. One is the really sort of low-hanging fruit, I think, teacher tasks, uh, email. You know, sort of the general day-to-day things that people are already using AI for, but that free up a lot of time and can make teachers more productive in the things they really care about and not some of the, you know, mundane things. So um, automating teacher tasks and then actual student learning outcomes. How is AI able to do that? How are we measuring it and is it really useful and productive, right? That's the big question. Um, and so that's the one bucket. And then just general AI literacy. You know, there's lots of terms, it keeps changing, there's lots of products and helping people really understand all the nuances. And then finally, sorry. Okay, so what's next? By the fall of this, the, the coming school year, we need to have some sort of guidance document put together. There's lots of them already out there and um, so we'll be working on that to provide that to staff and um, even students. On uh, some of what products that are already approved and things they can start to begin comfortably using. We have to look closely at cost. Gemini, which is the Google version of Chat GPT, uh, is a product that we'll probably focus on because it is already integrated into, we're a Google school, uh, and it's integrated into a lot of the systems. But there's a cost to using Gemini. And before opening it up broadly, uh, making sure that we're able to prove uh, that it's being used, you, used well and is worth the, the expense. The idea of opening it up for students, it's free for students to use, but again, that's a lot of policy and guidance issues that we have to, to resolve. There's state and federal policies coming, we know. Just last week, the uh, there was already an executive order um, released on, specifically on AI in the classroom or in K twelve um, schools. And so that's already out there and I'm sure there's more coming and we'll just have to work through it. Managing expectations. There's always a lot of fear, as Kate, you know, emphasized, uh, they kept coming back to concerns and fears in that early stages. And, you know, that's not going anywhere. So managing staff's expectations, both on what it's going to do and then i- in what scope, right? People with any new technology, something especially like this, people can get grandiose ideas of how things are going to go. And then when it doesn't go that way, they have big disillusion, disillusionment. And then they don't want to use it. And so, so far, I think we've done a good job of not, people expecting too much from the return on it. So again, continuing to manage those expectations and then by expectations, I also mean fears of um, how it might impact people's jobs and things. And then finally, from our chair, from our actual department, um, time, right? That it takes for us to do this new thing. Staff, every time um, I have, you know, a staff retire or leave, I always examine what their role was and what we might need going forward. And so um, as that occurs, we'll continue to think like, all right, we have this huge need, you know, and, and how can we maybe fill that with existing staff or replacements, right? And then um, finally, professional development for the entire district. And what that looks like. Megan mem- uh, referenced what we've been doing with this second group. We're doing that this, you know, again, Thursday is day two. And we'll be done for the year, it is May. But in the fall, what does it look like where we can move, continue to move groups of teachers through maybe a, you know, over a two-week period, a couple of day, like three or four-hour sessions to get them comfortable and exploring and um, looking at things? Questions or did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so.
So just a, a question from, go ahead, Luann.
Absolutely. Um, I think in the fall, as we, um, that, that guidebook, that guidance will be something we can bring back to the board for approval or certainly just like we would policy a first read sort of idea. Um, and we can revisit what's in there. There will be lots of specifics. We hope to have some clear uh, tools that teachers can, can dive into and feel comfortable with. What were we calling it?
The favorite five, L teachers Bay five.
Bay five, so uh, five applications or five tools that we want to recommend or suggest teachers start using.
And, and I would strongly, Ms. Johnson, in, you know, do training with the board. These are tools you can use to make your board work um, more efficient, um, consume large quantities of material. So it's in part, you know, helping you become users in this space, in your role. Right?
So I would say two things. Number one, I would say the Fab Five. If we're going with the basketball analogies, we should use Fab Five. But second, uh, obviously, we're pretty well resourced to be able to have the time and the ability to explore all this stuff. Is there a way to filter this down to our grade school districts? So that as we get students from these gr- grade school districts, they're, because we have so many districts that feed into us, that we can start to create some sort of level playing field. So that when they come in as freshmen, you know, I have some students that don't even know what AI means. We have some students that are highly proficient in it. So as we come up with this guidebook and, and either if there's some professional development or something like that that we can do with some of their tech people, um, to just try and filter that uh, message and the mission down to them, I think would be really helpful, in particular their junior high classes.
As one of the things, one of the sessions I went to when we were in San Diego was um, the Orange County um, has some sort of office that oversees or helps, just like we do. Our um, learning centers here in, at, like Will County has one. Anyhow, they had something and they had a, a opportunity where they had students presenting to students on things they have done. And so I think um, uh, they call them hackathons sometimes, but something where our students could even be presenting to the, the junior high students. It's a great opportunity for our students to have that leadership experience and, and um, share with them and then bring in the, the whole community.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
There's a, Mr. Thies, on June twenty-fourth, there's a relatively large uh, professional development that our seven feeder districts, we kind of, we meet once monthly, Lockport area superintendents. That was an outcome of, of that conversation. We'll probably have some representation. I've also shared the Leap Innovations and Play Lab work that we've done um, to kind of mash that. And um, I think what you'll, you'll see, we're, we're probably not going to have as big of a presence on June twenty-fourth because of the work that we've done this year.
Right.
And it's not a contrary set of work, right? But I think our, our feeder districts are recognizing the need in their own, you know, age-specific, age-appropriate levels. It seems right now the, the focus is on teachers, right? You know, to make their lives um, you know, more efficient, more effective, and then finding ways to get it to younger students. But you're right, you know, seventh, eighth graders, sixth, seventh, eighth graders. So there's good work being done.
I love that idea of teaching down. That's, I think that's a great idea. Two quick questions. One, uh, Leap Innovations, how many schools are a part of that?
Trying to think of the logos on the screen.
Yeah.
Dozens.
There's probably five school districts, my guess. Lincoln Way, um, Deerfield Highland Park, Barrington, us. I'm missing one other one. And then we have some university partners. We have some private uh, Chicago Catholic Schools is in it, Chicago Public Schools is in it. That might be who I'm forgetting. And then we have some charter school members, Noble Street, um, uh, distinctive schools. And then some university partners like um, National Lewis.
And my, I saw on a slide, uh, a student group fall of twenty twenty-five. Could you maybe expand upon what the intent there is?
As a, so as we've been working, as adults, we're constrained just because we're older and we think differently. When, I've offended Dr. McBride.
There's some ageism going on here, apparently.
There is. And uh, it was mentioned before, one of our tech students joined us in, in that first uh, group with the Leap uh, people. And the teach, our, our teaching staff was mesmerized by the way our student was thinking about it differently and creatively in a way that, that we don't. I mean, it, it's, it really is fascinating. And so we plan to uh, bring Leap in, uh, have them help students m- make some foundations and then start building um, an app through Play Lab. Something that they can share with their students, their own, you know, and their teachers to maybe use in class. We don't know what it looks like. Just because now that we're doing it on the fly, but it's constantly changing. And so in three months, in six months, when we get going, there may be something new that we really want to use them to help us examine and help us learn, um, as well as for their own growth. So it will be probably monthly meetings, um, somewhat modeled after Dr. McBride's um, superintendent advisory committee. And we do look to invite younger students, right? But sophomores and juniors, so that we have a length of time for them to grow and, and be a part of the, the process. So that's as far as we have right now. So we're, we're still framing exactly what that looks like.
Got it. Different than a club.
Yes, yes. Though uh, we had a conversation today with Nvidia on what sort of things they might be able to provide or partnership with. And so um, well, we've talked with our robotics club teacher, our AP science computer teachers and how exactly some of this can fit into their curriculum, into their clubs and just um, continue to explore all of those pieces. So the club piece could be very real. We just keep asking questions and looking for opportunities.
And just a general approach of involving, you know, getting students at the table and, you know, all the, all the things that we do. So very exciting, um, you know, just a lot of work. I'm, you know, I was glad to get the invite to be part of ERG two, you know? And, you know, enrolled in that and starting to look at my, my own work and tools and things that I can use. And one of the things I would just say is we kind of transitioned the next. And one of the things I would just say is we kinda transitioned the next presentation, cause that's, that's some, somewhat dense as well, is that we're, I think we're really trying to go beyond just using, you know, the chat feature of Gemini or, or ChatGPT, where you just query it and you get something back. There's a lot of use out there that has become used like a search engine, right? We're really trying to think, how can you use AI to, to create content? For me, someone who's tried to spend a life thinking that what we should be doing in high schools is students should create the content rather than us delivering or dropping onto the students the content. This, in my thirty-seven years, is the best shot we have of students actually being the content creators. Because it gives them a tool to make knowledge in a way that we haven't seen, you know, at least in that span of my career. So it's exciting. Hey, we've got our next group coming on up. Thanks so much for your engagement and similarly important matter here. I just wanna tee up our, our friends. You know District Management Group, Management Group assisted us five years ago with, thank you, Ms. Nelligan and Ms. Fahy, you did a great job, by the way, with, with our kind of current strategic plan. And our, our attraction with this, with District Management Group, is District Management Group is an organization housed in the Harvard Business School. And they approach the proposition of public education with a, a real business mind. And we were considering, Dr. Shaw went to the superintendent summit in my place, it's either board members or superintendent. And one of the things that District Management Group trains school groups and school teams is on something called Academic Return on Investment. So you'll hear our first Academic Return on Investment project. But the real desire was that we would get enough people trained that we would sprout a number of Academic Return on Investment studies over the next year. All of which comes down to, we know, we took the thing that we do every Wednesday that one could argue is absolutely the most expensive student achievement and professional development initiative that we had. And just had the courage to say, and create a study to say, is it working the way that we intended it? Many of us used our doctoral studies because we approached it like that. But it's a framework, Return on Investment, you know, is a business term. And so we really borrowed that from District Management Group. And Dr. Christophero and Dr. Huntington and Mr. Oster are gonna walk you through the study we established and then the actual research we did and the results that we came to. I'm gonna turn it over to you guys.
Thanks, Dr. McBride. I just wanted to share with you before we really get started that what you're gonna see tonight and what you saw in the report, it's really a product of nine people. Obviously, Dr. McBride was on our team, Dr. Huntington, myself, Mr. Oster, but as well as Dr. Johnson, Ms. Croy was on our team, Robert Beach, who's one of the assistant principals, and Dr. Lauren Carter. So the work that we're sharing is really the product of a larger team.
Dr. McBride so eloquently did the introduction for me.
Oh, shoot. But go ahead, do it.
No, you did exactly, you said exactly what I said. I really am excited to work again with District Management Group. You know, I know that when Dr. McBride came in five years ago, we engaged in the process of looking at our special services programs. And so I worked very closely with them and was excited to go on this next adventure with District Management Group.
Yeah, and as Dr. McBride said, right, they're really about improving student outcomes and they like to use a scaled model, like start small and then you can scale up. Obviously, you can move to the next slide, Bob. We've been in, Lockport has been working with this PLC model really since the inception of something called Common Time, but then we really amped it up, tried to be more strategic and systematic, starting in 2019. We've taken teachers to conferences. We've really focused on the questions, what do we want students to know, how will we know if they've learned it? Haven't learned it, what will we do if they've already know it? Really focused on collaboration, focused on results. So this is a little bit of our journey. So the first thing we had to do as part of our academic return on investment, after you determine what program you wanna evaluate, is really determine your success criteria. So we had lots of conversations, this was multiple hours, trying to figure out, how do you define the success of a professional learning community team? And so one thing we talked about, and you'll see a little bit in our research design, was have we set up the right framework for success? And that led us to doing some surveys. Another thing we knew as we were defining success is we did not want to place any additional work on our teachers. They're working in their PLC teams, they're really focused on their student results, so we didn't want to add something else to that. So that's when we came to agree upon grades are universal understanding of student progress. And so that became our other, or quantitative metric. So really, this slide just tells you kind of the design of our study. We did staff, all of our staff took a survey about our collaboration. This was everybody from custodians, parapros, secretaries to our teachers. We use student grade data, we did a department chair survey, and then Ms. Croy, of course, helped us with some data cost analysis. So there's lots of data in these reports, but I just wanted to highlight a few for you. I think it's really profound that we've been on this journey and ninety point four percent of the respondents, over two hundred respondents, said that the purpose of school is to ensure high levels of learning for all of our students. And I think that speaks volumes about our culture and our, our purpose. Obviously, great things about collaboration, voices were heard, but obviously, we always wanna go from good to great, like where can we get better? And so two of the things, again, while these are really small, we were like, oh, how do we ensure dissenting voices on teams might be something we look at? And how do we help all teachers, right? This is a really small sample that said they had trouble using assessment results to help students achieve at higher levels.
So the department chairs took the teacher survey because they're teachers too and they are on the PLCs, but then they also have a secondary role as their department chairs in the monitoring of PLCs. So they had a, a second survey that sort of looked at that aspect of how they, they monitor, coach, and support the PLCs within their departments. And like the teacher survey, mostly positive all around. Just a couple of areas that, you know, they, they felt that their teams were pretty well-functioning. Most of them are divided in content areas. There are some that are a little cross, cross courses with singletons, special education. But for the most part, the teams are Math One or Math Two course-specific. But the concern, the biggest concerns from the department chairs were just sort of having a handle on that monitoring of everyone and being able to support the different needs of the different teams.
So of course, when you have three thousand eight hundred students taking six to seven classes, there is a lot of data to kind of mine and look through. And so we wanted to really make sure that we were segmenting the data so we can really target and really understand how our students are performing and, and what those things look like. And so we kind of divided it up into like three buckets, right? So we have kids that have taken from week twelve to final grade and had positive gains. They, they scored higher, their grades improved. Then we had a group of students that maintained their grade, right? And I, I contend that maintenance of a grade is also a positive gain, cause it's hard. It's hard to keep those grades up as well. So we looked at that group of students that were maintaining their grades. And then we looked at students who shown a decline or regression in their grades. We really targeted and looked strongly at our intervention programs such as plus classes, students that were in math or science plus, students that attended compass sessions, as well as course grade averages and overall looking at the majority of students and how they showed growth or didn't show growth.
And, and if I just pause there for board members, you know, this is a typical look at data. You would never wanna look at one data set, you wanna triangulate. So math plus and science plus, very specific intervention for very specific students struggling in math and science. What happens when a team works with those students? Compass is the entire staff using one intervention, which is individual meetings with students during compass. We do about sixty-five thousand of those a year, take place, one-on-one interactions during, during compass, specific but general to the entire system. And then course grades, we took our two hundred and seventy-nine classes and just what were the grade growth in all of our courses, so much bigger. So granular to specific, but across the system to totally across the system, just having those three and triangulating that data was important.
So looking at, as part of ROI, you look at the cost of a program too. And as Dr. McBride said, it is the most expensive. One thing, a question that we've gotten from our department chairs is, does it really cost that much money, right? And, and it does, but it's not as though eliminating it would get that money back. We still have the time in the day, right? This is, most of this is the portion of the week that the teachers are scheduled for that PLC time. So the, in total, we figured it's about one point six million dollars. And again, most of that, one point four six million of that would be teacher time in that PLC time. And then there's some other cost in professional development, going to solution tree events, bringing in consultants. And it does affect every student. So it, it divided out, it costs about four hundred and eighteen dollars per student per year. Sorry, it's me again. Looking at recommendations then, so this chart on the left here, these, that's from District Management Group. They sort of have some different actions that you can do when you're finding a program. You can expand it, you can eliminate it, you can keep pieces. And in the, the bigger report, you'll see that there's most of those recommendations for different pieces of the program in there. But the, the two big pieces here are a little bit of changing in our monitoring and coaching of programs. And there's a little more on that, on the next slide, so I'm not gonna get too much into it. But then also looking at the team structure and, and some small changes to that to, to maybe make it more efficient for us. So for monitoring and coaching, one of the pieces that came, really came from the department chairs was in the unsurety of their roles in, in coaching the, the PLCs, you know, as members of PLCs, there's just some overlap in things. So really defining their roles and, and what they're to do. And then defining the role of the assistant principal of curriculum instruction as the leader of those department chairs. So how he supports the department chairs supporting and, and coaching them, as well as working with our, our instructional coaches and our soon-to-be-new assessment coordinator who, who'll do some help with the, the looking at the data for them. Finding a way, a more uniform way for the PLCs to monitor their own progress there. It's really PLC-specific and, and not more universal. And then providing feedback and, and coaching through those, those different ways that I talked about.
So really, we just want to help our teacher teams get really strengthen their work on really looking at student work in front of them. Because guess what? We found that this works, does the program work? Yes, it works for about eighty-seven percent of our students. So if we're not meeting the needs of thirteen percent of students and our teachers are working really hard, how can they really collaborate to go deeper on those students? And Josh talked about like department chairs doing some coaching, assessment coordinator doing some coaching. We just wanted to provide additional support and really focus in on that question. And so the last, while I have a moment here, I just wanted to say thanks again to our teachers and our whole staff who took the survey. Thanks to our department chairs for really digging deep into their survey. And I would be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Pat Dean, who did a lot of help with us.
Great job.
Data harnessing and actually came and met with the group to go through some data. So with that, we'll stop. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Can you go back to my favorite slide that had all the data on it that I asked you to go back to, the curriculum? Yeah, oh, you skipped it. Where'd it go? There it is. Alright, so just as a review from our curriculum committee meeting, PLCs are meeting, they're discussing student work, they're deciding who's going into math plus intervention, they're deciding who's going into science plus. And then compass is either determined by the teacher or the student gets to choose, correct?
That's correct.
So can students, I guess this is a two-part question, can students opt out of the intervention, the math plus and the, the science plus? So it's mandated that they go in?
Yes, and I would add that students, you might even remember this, Veronica, we have students, they, they like it, they see it as a security blanket. So we have students who sometimes don't wanna leave.
But the purpose is to get them.
Right, to get them out, get the support, yeah.
Okay.
And the compass, the one thing we didn't say maybe about that, cause Dr. McBride already said we had sixty-five thousand compass sessions. To narrow that a little bit, we looked at students who were placed in compass by the same, like, teacher, or they selected the same teacher three or more times. So those are the, those are the percentages. And again, it keeps falling into about, it works for eighty-seven percent. Realistically, we see a little slight variance with plus, but we know those teachers are working hard to support those students. So we're trying to think, like, what are structures and systems we can get to really go for that thirteen percent?
Right, because, you know, the, the, I would say this slide tells you the return on investment, if you're in the business of maintaining and improving grades, it's a, it's a high return on investment. But like any entrepreneurial system, what you're looking for is you're looking for, what are the markets or the customers or the clients that, that you want to reach, that you want to expand and enroll their success as well. So that makes us in this study wonder, okay, if we use these as a success examples, what, what do we find out from survey data? What did we find out in situations where there was high success? Well, what did we find out? We found out that when teachers really focus in on a very specific skill, when teachers go very specific on something, they want more than content, a skill, and not twenty skills, that that really leverages performance. We also found out, both from surveys and from this data, that where are the settings that that best happens? Where a group of colleagues can say, we need to focus on this skill. The smaller the team, the better chance that that, that focus emerges. The larger the team, the, the less focused. What's another factor? Time is a factor, right? Folks can get together in a small team, but they don't have ample time to exercise that conversation, really focus on that skill and look at how students are doing on it. It doesn't matter what size or their specific focus. And then like in any situation, what we found from survey data and from this data is that when there's an appropriate supervision, and by appropriate, I don't mean that anybody's being inappropriate, but when there's a level of guidance and coaching, from a department chair, from an administrator, teams are more high-performing, right? So how can you broadcast that across the system? You know, those, those results here to maybe reach towards some students that, that just for whatever reason, you know, we're in the business of trying again. That lesson didn't work, we're gonna try a different lesson to approach it. You know, that's, that's what we do as teachers. So acknowledging the real successes we've had, look at how we can reach to maybe some students who are, who are not, you know, performing the way that we want them to perform.
So just, and I can't remember if I asked this at the curriculum committee meeting, and if I did, stop me. But when the PLCs having these conversations and determining who's going into these interventions, they're also prescribing kind of what that student needs to work on for the teacher, or?
So they're identifying the skills and then, thank you, board, because we have teachers that are on the PLC team that also teach the intervention. So they're really nuanced on, yep, we know what the students missed and trying ways to reteach and reassess that skill.
And on, on the cost side, just to clarify, I think what it, the one point four million portion of that, that's really cost spent regardless. It's just, we're choosing to spend it on this program, so. And I think your, your cost effectiveness in the material for the board, really fifty-seven thousand dollars is really the cost of this.
Well, I, I might, I might refine that. And this is, you know, this is, you know, a Harvard Business School thing. Whenever we pay people and we ask them to do something, right? That, that, you know, you've heard the expression, time is money, right? So what this captures is you could, you could leverage that time into something else, you know? We could teach, we could not have a late arrival, we'll just teach, right? We could have a different approach entirely than these small teams, right? But this is what we've elected, we've selected. But this is what we've elected, we've selected and chose to, to have people engaged in. So the time does have a monetary.
Yeah, I can, I can appreciate that, I guess. I'm, I'm clarifying that this is, we're choosing to spend the money here.
Right.
But it's not, you're going to spend it.
Yeah, it's going to be the salary of that person no matter what, right? I think what you're saying is the discretionary cost is like the fifty-six thousand in, in terms of professional development support. That's a, that's a.
Really fixed cost.
Right, that's the fixed cost, right.
Yeah.
So I guess a part of the reason I was asking the question about it, if a student could opt out, I was trying to think of like, how could you have some sort of control group to compare? You know, the students who receive the intervention versus students that don't? Would you ever think about taking this data and comparing it to, you know, prior to PLCs? To see like student grades or anything like that? Would DMG recommend that? Or times are different, we're giving different tests, we're assessing in different ways. I don't know if it would be possible.
It would be hard because the recovery data on that, I, I don't know, Dr. Shaw, if it would be a apt comparison. Sort of before, you know, we, right now, we've been doing this so long, we don't really have a control group. And if you went back before there was any kind of collaborative time like this, I think your context would just be so different, right? That it would be hard, hard to do, to do a comparison. What we tried to do is create an experimental and control group. We tried in this particular case, look at grades in those three different settings, right? This isn't an experimental and control group, but it's grades earned under different circumstances, right? And different treatments. And I would suggest that you do start to see a pattern in the data, right? The data, no matter what the, the situation is, extremely broad or extremely narrow, seems to point that you've got about eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of students who are having positive gains or maintaining. And then you have kind of a persistent anywhere from thirteen, twelve, nine percent who are not. And that is repeated, no matter what, you know, way you're looking at the, at the grade data. So that's kind of how we try to do control group, experimental group, to compare something to something, right? Now, what you could do is you could just keep on collecting this data semester after semester after semester, which we would do. You know, we have the protocol now to see if there's an improvement, because obviously what we want to do is if we put some of these recommendations in place next year, you want to see, are you having a greater return on investment as you would, you know, anticipate?
Yeah, and so the, it's, it's really not a cost equation, it's really a time, it's a time management debate, I guess.
Right, and what I always say is in our industry, you know, in education, which is more valuable, time or money? I, I always say time, you know, because time with students, you hope you, you have growth. So whenever, you know, we take nineteen thousand hours of our staff and say, well, let's do this over here. We're not like in, for example, in this, we're not doing direct contact with students. One could make an argument that, that direct contact with students would be a higher value proposition, right? But there's also similar research that there's a higher value proposition, as you can see kind of the data here. You know, the yield that you're getting is a high yield, right? And gives you a very segmented target of students to kind of reach for, right? Lends me to believe that time is, is well allocated, but we want to take a look at our mechanics within that, you know, time, what we're doing.
If they have any questions of curriculum.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you have, you've been given a really full report before this, this team leaves. Really want to appreciate Mr. Oster, Dr. Christophero, they really spent some, some writing time on this. And I think it's a very strong document just from a written point of view. And obviously Dr. Huntington contributing, somebody had to pull the whole thing together and, and it's really outstanding. Also just reminding the board that the reason why we're doing this is now, you know, just like any good study, in the back of your report is areas for further study and limitations of the study. So what this has sproaded is you're going to see any number of academic return on investment projects next year. Truly say, well, what is the return on this, this investment? And really try to understand, are we reaching the success criteria that we said we were going to reach? If we're going to put time into something, we don't want to put time into something that isn't serving us the way that we ultimately intended it. So bravo, great job. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final portion of my report is, we had twenty-four student board members who have applied. We'll start screening those for you, but yeah, you know, the new board will be appointing those individuals. You also have a sheet asking you about graduation, your attendance. And typically, board members who roll off at this time period also do attend graduation because you've been such a significant part of the year. So the invite is to everybody, new and rolling off board members. So just want to let you know that that is, is in your, your packet.
Thank you. All right, our information reports, you had, you can see them there. If you have any questions. Yes. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items from two to thirteen. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two to number?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, moving on to our action consideration items. Do I have a motion to approve the licensed administrator contracts for the 2025-2026 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the non-licensed director salaries for the 2025-2026 fiscal year?
President Keneva, can I just make one, or ask one question of Dr. McBride? A couple meetings ago, or maybe it was even the last meeting, we had talked about how these were aligning with the union contract. And for some of the general public who's looking at kind of the aggregate percentage increase, that's a little bit different than what the union contract is related to. So I wanted to see if Dr. McBride could kind of walk us through that as we continue to, to go through this.
Right, you bet, because there'll be two things that you'll see, both in what you just approved and here, where we're at, and, and kind of moving forward on this third approval. And, and what that is, is individually, we look at each of the individual increases. For example, this employee group, we, we have linked to the contract individually. And the administrators, we've linked that to licensed, the, the licensed contract, those individual increases. Same with the non-licensed employees you're going to see in number three. You'll see for each individual employee, there is that percentage increase, but we also take a look at the total percentage increase. Now that sometimes is less, it drops. You'll see that on some of these spreadsheets. Sometimes it's greater than the collective bargaining agreement. The reason why it's greater is in some of the members of a particular employee group, there might be special situations. So for example, here, you can see Dr. Huntington is in the retirement lane. And because she's in the retirement lane and experiencing retirement benefits, that's moving the entire employee group up, the entire average. So we want to give you the individual increase, we also want to give you the total percentage group increase for that employee group. Oftentimes, you can have a movement that will bring it up if you have retirements. Or like there's another employee group where we, we get to the directors. Here, we're actually decreasing. And the reason why we're decreasing is we're hiring two employees to replace two more expensive employees. So the percentage is going to drop. So there's a difference here, how we've applied it individually versus how the entire group. For example, here, four-point-nine-four is higher overall at the top than the collective bargaining agreement for, for these particular individuals. They're not in the bargaining unit, we're just using it as a comparison. Why is that higher? Well, you see Sue Clefman, she's in the retirement lane, she's bringing that up. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes.
And, you know, hopefully it's a great question, Mr. Thies, for the public. And in some cases, it goes down as well.
And perhaps for the public as well, I really appreciate the dialogue we had on April third about all this, where we went into pretty great detail. And the additional staff you had here to answer a lot of questions at that meeting makes this process quite a bit more smooth.
And you're going to see as an underlayman, a strategy that we try to use in managing salaries and managing hiring is that when we have the opportunity to hire, we oftentimes are replacing longevity employees who are more expensive because of their longevity with employees who are going to come in at a much lower salary. That's not to get, you know, a second-rate individual, but it is to control those costs and keep them well below three percent overall. It's just a long-term strategy that has served us well. Hope that answered it. Well, we just think the public should see the individual increases, but also what is the total increase or decrease of this employee group?
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the non-licensed director salaries for the 2025-2026 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call.
Do you mind redialing or?
Yes.
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 Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the salaries for non-licensed employees not covered by the collective bargaining agreement for the 2025-2026 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the athletic trainer as presented?
So moved. Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, or did you want to make a?
And unfortunately, we can't go backwards on the vote, so yeah, procedurally, we're not going to be able to count your vote, Mrs. Johnson, on item number two, we, I think we lost you. And we are on item number three, or actually item number four, approval of trainer positions. So we're going to pick up on that.
On number one.
And we'll let the minutes note that we had, you know, technologically, you didn't abstain, but you just weren't part of the vote. So we are on item number four on the agenda, approval of athletic trainer positions. And Mrs. Lopez Keneva just called if, if there are any questions, you know, before taking a roll call vote.
And again, my, got it.
Okay.
My questions were answered at the earlier board meeting, so appreciate that.
Yes.
And just for the public, a month ago, we reviewed most of these really items, one through four, no, one through five. We reviewed these with the board last month, just to understand the dynamics in, in these salaries.
So it's been, it was motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis on the athletic trainer. And roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the bus driver's salary schedule for the 2025-2026 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? I have one, Ms. Kreid. Is this very, I know that we're always very competitive, you know, especially with Homer 33C. Are we still in line? It's, okay. All right, okay, thank you. All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025 summer curriculum budget?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the new curriculum resources for the 2025-2026 school year?
So moved.
And I can second that. Are there any questions?
No real questions, just that I appreciate the process that's lined out in the report, but also as was reviewed in the curriculum committee. It's very thoughtful and thorough and it was helpful to go over that, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the new English novels for the 2025-2026 school year?
So moved.
I can second that. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the part-time worker's schedule for the 2025-2026?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 consolidated district plan?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. Thies. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the tentative amended budget for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions?
We didn't interject a question, but I think Mrs. Kreid has done a great job on those four points of what the, what the revisions are. And this is the tentative amended, which will be voted on, you know, you're not voting for the final amended budget. This is the tentative, but I think Mrs. Kreid did an excellent job of why, why is this different than what you approved in September?
I second that, and the finance committee, I thought she did a great job of really spelling it out for us as well, so thank you.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the additional full-time grounds position?
So moved. Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, all right, there are no policy updates?
Oh, and just, you are so lucky, what landed in our mailbox on, I believe last Thursday, press one eighteen. You know, so Mrs. Maxwell and I are just looking to, to serve that up on May nineteenth to our, our newly inaugurated board, so we'll be getting into press one eighteen. It's not that bad, it's not that bad.
All right, thank you. Announcements.
Yeah, there it is. You know, we are entering the time of lots of things going on, it's a busy time. So Spring Musical, I would highly suggest it, it's the Addams Family, you know, very funny comedy. A lot of comedy being done on the, the high school scene these days in, in the Spring Musical season, a lot of high schools doing that. May seventh, the art show, outstanding, that's in the East Campus Port. Senior Dinner Dance coming up, obviously, we already had prom this weekend, check out Dr. JJ and her dance-off. It's worth the view. The big show, the big show is great, it's just choir unleashed. And then May twenty-third, kind of a very sweet senior sunset. Started the year with the senior sunrise and with senior, senior sunset. Of course, I believe May thirty-first is graduation and that is the official close to our academic year. So lots of big things coming up, going on, plenty to go to and see people doing great things.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. Thies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.